We might get P and B to do a spray at the hydrants on 236 up. They go out towards the house. They don't have anybody building those around those. If they, I know they spare for you at different times. If they would hit those four or five hydrants. And maybe hit one down south town with some kind of drill too.
Is there any over in town that need to be addressed? Is everybody else going around the block?
Most everybody knows it, but I don't know. The only other one is the one back. But I ain't done an adjacent to go all the way back to hydrant back there.
So Kathy, I see you guys got the bill for the sign in here. The new sign to put back up the town.
Got the money, yeah.
When's that?
I think we had it last month.
We did, but I see you got the bill from the sign company.
Oh, I had to send them half of it. Yeah, I had the quote, yeah.
Okay.
But I called them today because they haven't cashed the check yet. And I thought they was gonna be here by now, but they didn't return my call.
I just noticed that and I thought, oh, is the sign already done?
I took it that, yeah, it was gonna be a go, but I thought it was gonna be done before Kathy got out after. So now you gotta deal with it.
Don't pass it up?
I'm out of commotion for the next thirty days.
So the ace sign in the audience, that's the one?
You what?
The ace sign in the audience?
Yeah.
Is that the one that does the sign coming to town?
Yeah, I paid half of it and the one paid that balance when we did it, so. Got that money, you have the money for claiming it too.
Okay, we approved claims for the town and for the water department for the town. We approved $6,019.31 in claims. For the water department, $4,489.77. Under old business, the backflow preventer at the firehouse that was in question for about sixty days here has been completely rebuilt. It's due for inspection. I contacted the guy to come do that inspection. And pending his approval, we should be all done with every, with the idea of it all.
Would it be possible to get a copy of that invoice when it's all done? From John Bennett?
From John.
Yeah, that was the idea in a way of saying, hey, you actually fixed something, you know?
If I can get an invoice, honey.
Okay.
He was pretty kind the last time, so.
Yeah. My favorite meeting.
Yeah, my parts, for sure, yeah.
The firehouse is paying that, right?
Sure, yeah, I'll make sure that we follow up on that. We will have the public hearing for the water rate ordinance and the June meeting instead of this meeting. Do some difficulties getting that published and who was gonna publish it. So it'll be June the sixth at six thirty. Steve Brock will be here to present that at that meeting.
You talked to him?
I did, yeah. I talked to him and I talked to Nick also to let him know that, talk to Steve Brock. The other piece of old business was what Mr. Ireland brought to us last meeting. A request to discuss, look at a change in a town ordinance dealing with the sales of of any alcoholic beverage within the town of Marshall. We currently have an ordinance on books that prohibits any sales of alcohol in the town. And I thought this would be a good meeting to have that discussion. We don't have anything drawn up, we don't have any conclusions here, but I thought we would we would have that kind of discussion. So is there anyone on the board that wants to voice anything or you wanna hear from the public? Or what's your thoughts?
He had a concern last year. That he wanted full alcohol license, beer and wine.
Right.
And you were pretty much, I won't say dead set against it, but it wasn't what you thought.
Right.
But there is a leverage on that there, Kevin. Cause alcoholic beverage board can shut them down. Through a complaint from a town or something like that. They can revoke their license at any given time.
Right.
So I'm not, I'm not saying for or against right now, I'm just trying to tell you that it is there. The other context, rest last thing a lot, people like to have a drink, you know, with their meal, something like that. And I understand that, I see it all the time. I mean, will they make a deal? I don't know. Now, the other side to it is, I look at it as free enterprise also on top of it.
I did some thinking on it too, on it. And kinda looked how close vicinity of the neighborhoods are. And when you kinda went out and kinda looked at other bars and stuff, they don't have houses in the small area right there. So my concern is the hours disrupting the neighborhood. So it's kinda like, what, what does the neighbors, I wanna hear what the neighbors have to say.
Well, I think that's a good idea.
Because I don't see us staying open late at night, cause the town isn't.
I'd also hear, especially through the weekend.
And also the concern kind of brought up, you know, our town marshal's only part-time. We don't have a budget to pay for a full-time one. So are we gonna get the support from law enforcement since we're this far out?
Well, I mean, I don't know about that, I can't answer that question.
There's a lot of, yeah.
But that's a good question, but the other side to it is, you know, I'm gonna throw it out to like, Up the Creek, like, it's full service alcohol, I'll tell you. I don't have a twenty-four hour policeman out there either, so I mean.
And their hours aren't that late either.
No, I mean, I guess what I got is, it's a, I'm not sure, I don't have the answer right now, but I think it's something that can be worked around until I've gotten it.
Yeah.
But you are correct. I felt blindsided by what we were told coming into the original discussion. I think that we have to examine what our personal feelings are for what this town wants to be, needs to be, should be, the things that we're trying to do. And that, I think, would govern some of our potential vote one way or the other, it would mine. The other thing is, you were talking about the residences. I calculated within a one-block radius of that building, there's potentially twenty residences. Twenty homes. And that could be twenty homes with kids, with adults, with elderly, with whomever. But there's twenty residences, and I think that's pretty unusual, as you said, for a bar, I'm not saying a restaurant, a bar to have that many wrapped around a business like that. The other thing is, I don't know how the Up the Creek is handled with Park County because Park County would answer their calls. Our calls would come from possibly ordinance violations unless there's criminal activity. And correct if I'm wrong, Brady, but anything ordinance-wise, it would have to come to you. And that concern because you're part-time here and full-time in your deputy's position. And that creates a concern. If it's a criminal offense, I understand, Park County would answer, answer the call for that. So that, that would worry me a little bit is, and I say that because I've watched how ordinance violations in town from different kinds of ordinances. And we get to almost a dead end when we go to.
At courts?
To court. And we did, I mean, the building over there set for years with dead end after dead end on ordinance violations. And ultimately, it didn't have any bearing, in my opinion, on Ireland taking that building over and redoing it. It had nothing to do with the court. So that concerns me too, is the lack of really teeth after you go through the process with ordinances on that. I too wanna hear from people in public, people that are close by especially. But I think also people that are full-timers, old-timers in town that have lived in this community. And I think they have a bearing and a say-so and should have also. So that's, that's my speech.
Yeah, and I agree with what you're saying there too. Because the idea was a restaurant is one thing, but then when you're talking about doing a bar too, that's a whole nether, to me, another.
Group of people.
Group of people.
Cause that's what Up the Creek, you go there to eat and you might have a drink or two, but they're not coming in for two or three or four hours and setting at a band or.
Staying out that late. I mean, if the creek closes by, be it by ten o'clock, nine, I mean, nine. And I have a feeling, I don't think that's kind of what they're kinda wanting to do, is stay closed that early.
We want to do more of a cantina than more of a restaurant that serves alcohol, not a bar. Like, it never has been a bar, it's just we want to be able to serve alcohol.
But if you're gonna stay open till one or two or three in the morning, that's a bar.
Well, I said that in the beginning though, we don't wanna stay open that late, like, there's nothing in this town that late.
But I thought you was wanting to have bands and things, that's what you come and said you wanted.
If we have a special event, you know, we've got the room for it and stuff, but like, we wanna work with the town. Like, if the town was having some kind of celebration or something, we could have the bands coming in because we've got the room. But like, it's more of a cantina, like, we're gonna serve food, but we wanna be able to serve alcohol as well. But like I said, you know, there's no reason to stay open till three o'clock in the morning.
Why the change from beer and wine requests that came to us last fall when you and I talked? And I think maybe you talked to others on the board, the same thing, why the change?
Mainly the investment that's taken to get into this building. I mean, we're already a hundred and thirty thousand and we're only done with not even a third of it. So we're talking, you know, close to four hundred thousand dollar investment that's built. And the market on beer and wine is just not there. Now, the market on alcohol, obviously, is almost seven to one. So you're gonna be able to get your income back that way.
Under the arches here, for how many years it didn't have any alcohol? I mean, they had a good poll from everywhere. You could be just about anywhere and they say, oh, we had a little restaurant in Marshall under the arch. They've been here and eaten it and it didn't have alcohol. And I know my parents go to a lot of places in this state of Indiana to take off and go on a motorcycle. And they don't go because of the alcohol, they go because of the food. But they take off and go, and that's word of mouth, that, you know, they've heard about it.
That's a lot of things. Like you said, and if there is food there, then, I mean, you said like a canteen, it's gonna be more of a sandwich, so.
Burgers, sandwiches, quesadillas, mixed different things, wings. I've been in the restaurant business, my name is Mr. Savage. I am the financial backer behind this whole situation, okay? Got questions, please address them to me, I'll be more than happy to help. But it goes back to, man, you said about the residents in the local area. Has anybody knocked on doors, talked to anybody, has anybody voiced anything, any feedback from any of them? Number one.
I have a brand-new customer or a brand-new resident moved to town within the last thirty days and they left Rockville for this exact reason. Because they sat on their porch at night and listened to Thirty-Six Band and they got tired of it.
And what time, I don't know anything about Thirty-Six Band, how long do they stay?
It starts anywhere from seven or eight o'clock at night and goes till, I don't know when. And they're on Main Street right through here.
Well, so my, my, my thoughts on this, ten o'clock, Sunday through Thursday, one of the days will be closed, most likely it'll be Sunday. Monday, kinda like a all-you-eat fish, maybe bingo to bring the people in, cause usually Mondays are the slow days for people. So counter it with Friday, that's one weekend off weekend, provide something else, meal-o dinner or something like that, sort of to reverse it. My background is restaurants, bars, retired law enforcement, retired combat medic, or a combat military guy, set in towards Iraq and Afghanistan. I've been around the world, states, cities, countries, lots of different places. I'm not boasting or bragging, all I'm saying is I've got a lot of diversity in life. I had the opportunity to take finances to many different places. I saw something here, that's why I'm here thus far. Sir, you mentioned something about personal, you gotta look at your personal, you said personal on the town. That's what you started with, we gotta look at the personal and then we gotta look at the town. Is it your personal, like, what you think in regards to it? Or is it the person of the town's people? I'm just trying to understand from what you said.
Well, I think it's town's people, I think the ordinance, original ordinance in this town has been in effect for over a hundred years.
Eighteen something, right? Quaker, back in the day, Quakers, I'm understanding?
Nineteen oh four.
Okay, nineteen oh four, so, alright.
So that, that ordinance has stayed on the books for a reason. Because of the persons in this town, the person on the board, the person that led that. And it's not the first time that someone had requested the sale of alcohol in this town and it was turned down.
Okay.
You weren't here the last meeting.
No, I'm not.
You can go back and look at the video of that meeting. And within that, Mr. Ireland said he, that he's changed his mind because he's looking at liquor.
Correct.
Not beer and wine. He's looking at a bouncer, he's looking at music, because we had concerns, and we being the people that were at that meeting, about how that's going to affect the town. Now, from a personal point of view, I live two doors down.
Yes, sir.
Tom lives right next door.
Didn't you used to own that building, if I'm not mistaken?
No, not that building.
The attached?
No, the other building.
Attached to?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm just trying to understand, that's all.
That's fine.
Faces, names.
The other piece, as the town board president looking at this from my point of view, I don't see how your liquor license in town of Marshall, your bar in the town of Marshall, does anything for Marshall in a positive manner. I, I see restaurants, I know there was discussion about beer and wine, whether it be pizza tacos or whatever.
Correct.
But I don't see how groups coming in to a bar in downtown Marshall has any benefit for the kind of town that we would like, and I'm saying myself as we, that we would like the town to be.
Okay.
This is a small, family-oriented town that's trying to survive.
Okay.
Your bar, let me finish, please. Your bar really doesn't bring anything to the town other than a business. We don't get any, we don't reap the benefits from that bar. So we're looking, I'm looking at it from that point of view. What, what is it that Marshall gets from you making money in the town of Marshall?
Okay, so question, then, Marshall doesn't get taxes from this company over here? I mean, nobody pays taxes for businesses in here or ever has? Cause where I come from, every city, every town, whatnot, they pay taxes back into the community for the police and the fire department and stuff like that, is that on campus?
You'll play property tax.
Okay, but nothing else?
Right.
I'm all about giving back, always have been. So when you say that, first off, I gotta correct the word bar. Bar is a negative word, never have liked it.
You're, you're construction into persons that wanna use that term.
That's why.
Go back and look at the video. That's where the word started. I'm not, okay, excuse me, I'm not here to set up a contentious argument, I'm telling you what was said.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain. There will be a bar inside to serve for people to eat and have drinks, is what was requested. But the word bar is not there. The name would be Riley's Cantina, is the name.
Why would you need bouncers in that situation?
You asked me if there was gonna be any security issues, we can have bouncers there. I said, we are all, we're all veterans, we are, you know, former law enforcement. You know, if it need be, these were the questions that come about, like I said. I wasn't really prepared to answer questions like that other than what I know, you know, that we can, that we can handle. But like, none of it was set in stone as far as, you know, we're gonna have a band every Friday night or anything like that.
Well, I would, I would guess that nothing's set in stone if the town would allow you to pursue a liquor license that would stop you from changing your mind on how you wanna to operate that business.
So that's why I said we was here to work with the town.
Correct.
I wanna work with the town.
I, I understand that.
That was the request, and that's why I'm trying to, I guess, inform and educate of what I'm trying to see here. I, myself, like to give back, like I said. I want to help the town, whether it be contribute to the road repairs, whether it be to help the fire department, whether it help to, you know, the town to clean up trash or whatever, I don't mind. Whether that take funds from there to have a carnival for the town over here in the park lot, I do not mind. I'd much rather give it to the town than the federal government where it can come off the advertising expense and marketing and put back into here.
Right.
I don't have an issue with that. I have an issue with the word bar, it's not that type of atmosphere. Again, I've worked in bars, I've worked in restaurants, I used to manage for Applebee's, Smokey Bones, which is a form of Darden, who owns Red Lobster, Bahamute Breeze, you know, Olive Garden, stuff like that. I've done quite extensively in the food, marketing restaurants and alcohol sales. I don't want confrontation at all. I definitely wouldn't want to have anybody come in there that's gonna be a riot because then no other patrons is gonna wanna have a sandwich. So that defeats the whole purpose of actually presenting an atmosphere and then spending all the money to put into this building. Again, where I could've took that money way somewhere else. I mean, I'm almost four hours away from this location, at which I make about two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Not bragging, but I took and come here because it's important to me to show that I care about where my money goes, okay? I've worked very hard to get where I'm at. I understand there is a lot of residents. If I have to go knock on every door and talk to everyone, worst thing, get their view, I have no problems with that. I have no problems with it. I want to work with the town, obviously, to accept, to explain and answer any other questions that I can.
Have you been involved in this since the beginning?
I have.
My question is, six or eight months into it, why are you now designing the way that this business is going to look? I would've thought it would've been reasonable, as you came into this town, you would've asked for that early on to find out whether or not it's even gonna be viable for your business. Cause without that change in that ordinance and not able to sell liquor or maybe any alcohol in the town, that changes the whole look and the whole design of your business, correct?
There's other things that I wanted to do with it, partially yes, partially not. I also wanna take and provide games for dartboards, dartboards, pool tables, other things in there. Like I said, I wanna do some bingo at night, you know, have card nights or whatnot. Things for people to do in here that don't have to drive, they can literally walk from a home or a block or whatnot to come in here, have a sandwich and do something. Maybe once a month, if there's a local band that says, hey, this is what we do, okay, well, I got a little bit, play some music for an hour or two. I didn't wanna be open till one, two, three o'clock. I didn't like working it that late, prior to my years. On the weekends, one o'clock is what I was looking at, twelve, one o'clock on a Friday and or Saturday. Which is typically standard, most times, your big city's two-thirty, you know, for a liquor license, go ahead.
So you're saying your, your hours are gonna be, how late are you looking now? But the normal restaurant only stays open till, I mean, Applebee's quit serving at what time? I mean, usually, ten?
Applebee's?
Eleven.
When Thomas and King owned Applebee's, which was headquarters out of Louisville, Kentucky, it was two-thirty in the morning. Was, was what it was. That was, you know, through the week, through the, through the normal time, till one o'clock. Most time, it was completely dead between, you know, eleven and one unless you had your late-night people that came from a football game or whatever, and then they come in a group, okay? Ten o'clock is the latest I would wanna stay open through the week because school, workers, whatnot. Mainly that is to finish up. The weekends, again, like I said, midnight, one o'clock on a Friday or Saturday evening. And again, Sunday, I really don't foresee anything being open on Sunday unless it's like football season. Have a special window for, you know, the football people that wants to come in, watch multiple different games all at the same time. But that's about it. I'm willing to work with the community, again, even put it in, I believe it was you, sir, that an ordinance can always be reversed at any given time, something that I like it. It can be voted and be changed, you know? I, again, I'm trying to bring something here as a positive, not a negative. Like I said, I could've done this anyway.
But based off of that, what, what attracted you to Marshall then?
This young man right here?
Okay, he left Marshall, he was in Marshall and he moved out of Marshall.
Oh, everybody has experiences.
So what attracted you to come, that you wanted to put a hundred thousand dollars, what you're saying now, well, now you're saying a hundred and thirty thousand dollars you're in, into this building that was basically run down and split apart?
Oh, very good.
So what attracted you to come to this town, what intrigued you?
Nothing in general other than the community has been brought down, left. The restaurant next door shut down, there's nothing here for anybody. But I also see the potential around Park County, the lake, the people coming from Indy, the hunters that come through here, all the lakes for people to fish and stuff like that. There's nothing for anybody to do, that's it. So I see the potential, again, had my own sales and marketing company for years, of what it can be. But if everybody just wants to stay in a small town and if you have served, I respect it, to keep the town safe, to survive, what is just survive by barely anything unless to endure it and grow it, to provide something for the homesteaders here? Who would wanna come and live here if there's nothing to do here? That's just my opinion.
Well, we have a lot of older people here, we don't have a lot of young families, so.
But are those older people gonna live forever?
No, they're not.
Of course, and that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'll be forty-seven years old. Like, most people look at it like, wow, you're almost fifty. Unfortunately, yeah. But there's other people way older than me that's like, okay. But how many other older people goes into either Rockville, Terre Haute or wherever just to get a meal? I don't know, I haven't talked to them. I'm literally just trying to provide something for complete strangers that I never know about that will either make it or not. Along with that, I like to put some living space up top, potential room and board. There's nowhere to rent around here, so if I can put three or four apartments up there, meet all the codes, whatnot, now somebody can live somewhere. It's just options, it's just this side of the building here, I wanna make it like a breakfast area. Donuts, coffee, you know, midday you can have sweets, as in slushies, ice cream or whatever, for a sweet treat. I'm trying to do multiple things in this whole building for the benefit of anybody within a twenty, thirty minute.
Have you talked to the local businesses, like, we're gonna do parking, because we don't have a lot of parking?
I have not.
Because that's gonna be another issue because of. Because that's gonna be another issue because of parking lot that we currently kind of like use and park. That's the bank's parking lot. And I think there's been some issues sometimes where the bank ended up and doesn't like people parking there, cause if they leave a mask, it's a mess.
We have spoke to the bank briefly. They asked if we're gonna be banking with them. Don't know yet. So obviously they want my money.
So, I mean, and that's gonna be another thing kinda that we need to think about too. I mean, parking is.
Yeah, future. Scott upset cause they use theirs a lot under, under the arch that they was towing, looking at towing vehicles.
I know this factory right here, uh, both unpacked the lunch, we gotta go somewhere. Haven't booked a, gotta go far.
Well, they were one of those upset with under the arch because they had parking, their parking spots even at night that they couldn't get to their facility. And you have, you can't park in front because then you're asking for problems with semis turning the corner directly.
I'm just answering your questions. Those are the things that I'm trying to provide.
Yeah. I, I guess my concern is really is, is the, kinda, the hours are one thing, like you said. I mean, I don't know if the town people, I mean, it's a small area, midnight might be a little late for some.
And honestly, if there's no business, why stay open? Why pay employees, electric, cooling, everything else if there's no business? The hour is complex. I'm just going in by other areas that I've been in.
Okay, so you're, you're flexible with hours and stuff?
Of course.
Cause obviously you don't realize Mondays around here, there's not too many places to eat Monday night.
Absolutely. That's why I, I thought, why you need fish on a Friday night? I mean, instead of Friday, to a Monday. But it does not, it is not business oriented to waste money. And if there's nobody coming in between nine and ten or, you know, ten and one, why stay open? Why run all the light fucking stuff?
So you guys have not even went around and kinda asked residents any questions, just kinda see their thoughts of your business?
We have so many people come through asking, wanting, requesting, when you gonna be open, this, that and the other.
Well, I think their idea is what the under the arch had. There was no alcohol. It was just family dining, basically, with sandwiches and they were closed by nine o'clock.
And a lot of it was Sunday.
Sunday brunch time.
Elder people that would come back from church.
Just brunch and they were closed by five.
And I'm sure they had a lot of regulars that's been, is there for a long time, correct? If I'm not mistaken.
About four, five years. It was that long. I don't know how long.
You're talking about people that came from Illinois just to eat under the arch. They weren't, they weren't regulars from down the street.
No, no, I'm saying they had their clientele that came from here, there and everywhere.
They kinda came from word of mouth, people just kinda.
A lot of them park.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sir, the, the state park. They had a lot of people in it, but that's what, and they also sell liquor out there. Yeah, I'm gonna do that. They started that last year.
So.
I mean, I've heard pros and cons when I've been out in the public.
But I think that's kinda what the public's idea is. I mean, I don't think the public realizes the alcohol, so I don't really know how the alcohol and it kinda is. I mean, like I said, I like want a, a place and I'll have a drink every once in a while, but not the, I don't stay out really, no, sometimes.
I feel, I feel like I'm the most impacted of anybody.
Yes, yeah.
Cause I was right there. Okay, I was right there. I've been there for twenty years. I was also military, I retired from the military. When I moved here, I moved here for one purpose, because it's quiet. I got so tired of the noise, twenty something years that I had to deal with. I got to go to a quiet place. Now, when the restaurant was here was great. Everybody loved it. And there was two different restaurants at different times. The second time, the last one came out because of COVID, it blew them apart. Now, me personally, I drink beer, no big deal. I even drink some alcohol as well. But I don't want alcohol here. Beer is wine's wine. As long as there's a restaurant there where they can eat, no big deal. So I, I know statistically how people get, especially I see guys down here in this area, they get drunk for pools. And I just, just to tell you today, I see a pool, and my wife went to Brazil. I don't know if you've ever been to, uh, what's it called? It's a crazy name. Uh, Fast Edges. It's a little bit of, little bit of him in, in, in Brazil. A guy came in there and started chewing another guy out for his girlfriend, right there for my wife. One guy had a gun on him. You can carry a gun in Indiana now. Now, he either say, okay, you come in this establishment, you can't carry a gun, why you violate the Second Amendment? But there's people like that, and there's people like that. I've seen it all the time, years ago, when people would run out here. And it's gotten better, cause some of the families were, for a piece of ass, looked at, okay? But that's the biggest concern we have here. And you have two major churches in this town. The others are gonna fight you on it. I'll tell you right now. And it might not fight you on beer, cause beers kinda look a little bit differently. Now, you still get drunk and full with it. But it comes alcohol, it's a different story altogether. And I got grandkids at my house all the time. I don't need some drunk ass dumbass coming over my house beating on my door. Cause that's happened in the past too, with no bar here. And you're not gonna get the, the response out of this town that you think you might get with alcohol. Cause they will, they, they will, one thing, I'll find that, cause I just know that myself about it. You know, I'm also, I'm also supporting businesses here. Do you wanna bring a restaurant here? When, when you were talking to the residential time, we, you talked about it, you're talking about making a little like eating area, a little ice cream thing, cool, that would go great. But a lot of people, like Kevin was saying, a lot of people that went to the restaurant weren't from here. They've, they've come from Terre Haute. I had a lot of family down Terre Haute come out here, cause their food was awesome. They were a great restaurant. I'm, I'm sad we're left. But that, to me, that's, that's the big point for gonna be a lot of people, is that alcohol brings out stupidity. And that's what people are afraid of.
And I've had five new residents moving to town just in the last thirty days. And they moved here for quiet, they moved here because they liked the small town. They knew what they were getting into, that there wasn't a restaurant, that they're gonna have to drive somewhere. And like I said, one of them came from Rockville to get away from Illinois. And we have the potential that there's two or three more houses that's on the market right now. Now, I'm not saying that those people might not say, hey, we'll come up and, you know, have dinner and have a drink or something. But they moved here because they wanted the quiet, they didn't wanna have to deal with any of that. And so, yeah, I don't know. So we are having new people come to town.
And I think Up the Creek started out, if I'm not, if I'm thinking correctly, it seemed like they just started out with the beer and the wine to see how it went. Before they went and added the regular liquor. The beer and wine is all Up the Creek had it in the very beginning.
That's where they started out once, yes.
Yes.
You're not in residential later either.
Right.
No, they had a state park across the street.
And that's, that's on the state park.
Yeah.
So I got, I got something to say to you guys then. So, so you're actually wanting to do an Indian place with beer and wine possibly? And sound like you almost think that's a given, if we change that ordinance, allow that. But according to, I think to the state law of Indiana, you gotta sell what, a hundred thousand dollar worth of food per year to qualify for that?
Yes, sir.
But you haven't done that yet.
No.
And you don't know if you can do that.
No, sir.
So it's not a given, you're actually gonna get this.
Right. But with that, the first step of the city changing, then we can't, everybody, we can't make that step.
Why can't you open a restaurant and see how your food goes over to make a go of it to begin with? And then add that on later? Why, I mean, you're not gonna make that much money just off alcohol alone. You're not gonna have that many customers come in just for alcohol. You're gonna have more people come in to eat.
The investment of holding food, like ordering so much food and storing the food to make the food, the overhead cost is what the issue is with the expenses going into the building. When you lay down the numbers, for instance, Applebee's, Applebee's pulls from a big amount of money as an example. Mom and pop stores, they have to create that menu and then keep so much on stop and then continue to order to continue funneling that money through. Your big restaurants don't have that issue. They're kinda like a Walmart or Fire and all that. People go, they go, they pull from different things. That's why those big restaurants have the liquor. When I was the liquor manager, you're talking a sixty cents, two shot for sixty cents and they charge eight dollars for a mixed drink. I'm sorry, their liquor sale is what makes that restaurant to stay afloat, because they're not selling as much food as their liquor, their beer and their wine. When you get a six ounce glass of wine, when the bottle Chardonnay costs seventeen dollars and they're selling one six ounce glass for seven dollars and eighty cents? I'm sorry. I beg to differ on the liquor sales, the beer sales, the wine sales compared to the produce sales.
But you knew this six or eight months ago, whatever that date was when you came in there, correct?
Yes.
And your comment to me was, we were gonna have a food establishment, we would like to sell beer and wine, but we have no interest in liquor. That's, that was a quote from you. I understand you gotta make money to be in business. I fully understand that. But we are in charge of trying to protect the town and the townspeople so that they can have a way of life here that they choose. If Tom wanted to drink, he wouldn't have moved here. He could've moved to another small town ahead of him. He wouldn't have moved to Marshall. The people that Kathy has talked about this move to Marshall said, I'm tired of the noise. I'm tired of the bar scene. I wanna be in an area, as you said, that there's nothing here. Well, what's here is what they're looking for. And what you're saying is, let us come in and change it, because we think we can tell you that what you have is a boring, boring little place in Indiana that nobody wants to be.
I never said boring, sir, respectfully, sir. I said I want to provide something for the community.
You said there's nothing, nothing here.
That's why I said nothing. I said that. Those are my words. As respectfully, sir, I want to provide something for the people. That's what I followed up with.
You wanna provide something that you, of course, wanna make money with.
Well, of course, isn't that.
Let me finish my statement, please. But you have no clue about what Marshall's about. You have no clue about the people in Marshall. You don't have any clue about what this gentleman here wants that lives, uh, thirty feet away from your wall. You, you have no clue and you didn't ask those questions. Mr. Ireland knows. He's from this area. He knows what the people like, are like in this. They're not any different than the people over at Judson, that are in, you know, Guyan, that are in Belmore. It's the same kind of people that choose to be here for this. I don't know if you have a better answer for the people here than what they already have. But I do know that a bar at any type that changes the whole complexity of the town isn't necessarily what I would think would be ideal. Apparently, it's not what Tom thinks is ideal. I'm not gonna talk to Kathy, because she can talk for herself. I think that's what you under, need to understand. And again, I go back to the point eight months ago, when you walked into this town and the comment was, food, possibly beer and wine, never a bar, never late night. Those were all totally personal.
And those were in the beginning when I had, like I said, at the same time, I said, I really don't know what we're gonna do. I said, it isn't decided yet. But this is kinda where we're leaning.
Let me ask you a question, sir. From what I'm hearing or trying to understand, you're leaning towards more beer and wine, no liquor. Is that what I'm understanding?
No, I didn't say that.
No, you, you just keep referencing beer, 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 this gentleman said beer, okay, you know, everybody wants a beer. May I ask you a question? If a, another entrepreneur came through and said, hey, you know what, I'd like to put a convenience store there or a drive-through there. Would you tell them the same thing? No. No, I don't, I don't want you to have that, because I understand you can sell sandwiches at a convenience store. You can go back to the store and buy, buy some liquor and beer and wine. I'm trying to understand.
You're talking apples and oranges.
You're not.
Uh, not exactly, ma'am.
Yet you are.
One is a city bound, one's a drive-through. It's the same, you're still selling the same services?
Well, it, it, it all comes down to, regardless of, of your point of view, my point of view, if whether or not that we think opening up the town for the sales of liquor is a good thing. It's a good thing for you, because the cash goes into your pocket. But we don't know if it's a good thing, we don't, we don't know that.
I'm telling you that. I'll put it in writing.
It, it, it means nothing at this point in time, because you don't even know if you can.
But respectfully, you're saying that. But you're telling me what you think I'm gonna say. You're, you're saying that you're not gonna do that. The money's not gonna go. I'm telling you that.
Excuse me, this is my meeting.
Yes, sir.
And you will allow these people here to talk. We will let you talk respectfully.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What you need to understand is, you have no approval to do anything. You can sell sandwiches there. You can sell soup there. You have nothing more than that. And there's no guarantee you won't have more than that. That's, that's where we're at. But where it started was a long way from what we were explaining the last meeting. And that's what began the whole process of people not necessarily liking what they were hearing. I didn't like it. And I don't see it as a benefit to the town. Whether I agree and would want liquor there or not personally, that has nothing to do, cause my job is to represent the people of this town in whatever decision I made. So what, what is it that you wanted to say when I was trying to tell you?
Well, you made a statement that you can't guarantee the money will come back to this town. Those statements, which I corrected, as in, yes, money will come back into this town, like I said, to the different facilities around here and back to the people of the town. So I wanted to verify that.
Yeah. And that could be an empty pro, uh, promise. It could be true. I don't know that, cause I don't know you.
You gotta make an awful lot of money first before you be handing out money.
Not exactly. Not when it comes to the federal government, you gotta pay federal taxes.
Well, I understand that. I have a business also.
Absolutely.
But I did all my due diligence before we started our business on what we could and couldn't do. And that's why I feel like, I'm like, these guys, this should've been done six months, a year ago before you ever looked at buying that building. What is available? What can I do? What will the board let me do? But you're not gonna just go handing out money and having a carnival for kids over at the park until you start making a profit.
I didn't mean just automatically throw money.
But you're talking, this day and age, it takes a lot of money to make money.
Trust me, ma'am.
And we all know that. So.
You're looking at somebody that started and scratched nothing on the streets at thirteen years old, ma'am, okay? And have built my fortunes on my hard work.
And that's great, but what I'm saying though, you're just not gonna give it away.
No college, okay? Just hard sweat.
You don't have to have a college degree to make something as worth.
And that's my point.
Exactly.
I, I know how it is to work hard and make money. That's it.
Right. So that's why I said, you're gonna make sure that you get the money, you put it back into your business, cause you've got a long ways to go to recoup. So before you can start saying you're gonna be handing out money left and right to do things, you're gonna take care of yourself first. So we can't look at that aspect either.
Brittany, you have any comments on what we talked the other day after the meeting? You had some thoughts and some worries and concerns. You've seen a lot more of how and what happens potentially in bars that are run, run the wrong way.
Well, my thing is, how are you going to, are you gonna have people trained for over serving? I mean, cause you go down to wave one, I don't know if you know where that's at?
I do not, sir.
But there'll be ten, twelve people in that bar that have had twice as much as they should.
And you'll have that at different locations and bartenders are held responsible, then the managers and then the owners. So it's also about education of the bartenders. Again, I have been, started waiting tables, bartending, yes. People supposed to know the signs, do people follow the signs? Not exactly. If that were to happen, fire the bartender, fire the manager. You have to keep tabs on the establishment, any establishment and all establishment.
As far as like, so he initially said that you guys are gonna have bouncers. Are you not gonna have bouncers?
A cantina, sir, does not need a bouncer.
You guarantee it?
A cantina, food, whatnot, is different from an actual full-blown bar, dance club.
I've been to Dairy Queen's for fights.
I've been to Walmart and they're fighting in the, in the, in the line. I, I respect that. I understand that. You do. Anybody can get in a fight anywhere they may go. It's between two stupid people that just doesn't understand, walk away. Is that fair to say? Okay, so my point to that is, if there's an issue, it's addressed, people are removed from the scene. You've gotta address the situation as it happens. We can do the what ifs all day long, until it happens, address it, move on.
How are you going to respond to ordinances? Because like they said earlier, we are in a pickle with those, because they really don't do much. Are you gonna listen to us? Are we just gonna keep asking? Are you gonna listen to us? Are we just gonna keep asking, "Oh, no, no?" And that's, that's the other thing.
I'm a retired law enforcement. I respect the law. I did a lot of work, a lot of hours. I can only tell you the words that comes out of my mouth, and you guys will only listen and accept what you want to because you don't know me. I don't know none of you. It's gotta give, be a given tape and a respectful thing for anything to go forward, okay? I would not jeopardize the reputation of a business with bad apples to hinder any future sales. Why, it, it's gonna get out way quicker, "No, that's a bad place. They don't take care of anything," or this, that, and the other. Don't go there. Social media has changed the whole way of, of everybody thinking you can put stars, likes, this, that, and the other. You can, you, you can grow a business in two weeks just from word of mouth. Again, I said, early 2000s, I had my own sales marketing company. That's what I pushed, okay? I know this. That's, again, with the social media, night-day, night-day difference of how quick a, any business can fail just by people speaking the truth, you know, doing their due diligence, putting up and sharing this, they got good tenderware sandwiches, or, you know, they, this is a happy-go-lucky place. Hey, they got bingo on Monday nights with this, that, and the other, or blah, blah, blah. Again, I cannot tell you something for you guys to guarantee to listen to me. I can only tell you what the plans are and to promote an apple.
So in hearing that, I'm hearing you say that you will take responsibility if you end up and you do find out that you have bartenders that are over-serving people, you will take personal responsibility of those. You are not gonna end up and just, let's say, if we say, yes, you can, you can, you know, you can go through with this, then you're just not gonna just throw it out the window and then just do what you want. You're gonna abide by all the rules and stuff.
My business would put it in writing with my lawyer's number. I have no issues. I'm not trying to cause problems. I want to respect the law. Again, that I fought for in the military and the law that I provided and protected as a peace officer.
And that's what we're trying to protect, the people here, is because we don't know you. We don't know how, you know, if you're gonna abide by what you say or not, what's that relationship gonna be to the town? And I think there's still some things to kinda think about, and I did not do my total due diligence. I didn't check with the liquor board to see what rules and regulations, so that way, there's a way. Because who's to say if we open up one liquor license, another little building comes, once we open that up, we might not get the same type of person like you who's gonna abide by the law, and there's no control we're gonna be able to have, and then we got Joe Blow over here doing whatever, and he's bringing in trouble.
Yes, ma'am. I will say, speaking to the state, there is two liquor licenses available for the county. Is that right? I, I'm trying, I, I would like to buy both of them. So there is nobody in the county. It'll just be this place.
But when another one opens up...
They have to, well, the county only allows so many liquor licenses.
I know, but if somebody else ended up and closes down and opens up another one or dies... No, and another place in the county. You said the county. The county as a whole. If we have another one that shuts down, then that leaves another one that's opens up.
You didn't know the liquor license is available, of course.
Yes, available. Then we're kinda stuck because once we pass that ordinance and say that, yeah, we can do away with it, then we are liable for anybody to be able to do.
Here's one, an idea. If it were passed in your ordinance and how your lawyer writes it up and voted on the people, only one allowed in your town.
I already talked to the attorney about that. There are two things that are certain. One is, if we do nothing, we don't have to answer to any of these problems at all. The other thing is that if we open it up, there is no stopping the next person from coming in and the next person from coming in. There's absolutely no end in sight, and that comes from our attorney. So you either leave the door shut and take care of all that, or you open the door in hopes that two or three other establishments do not come here. Waylon's got two. I don't, they used to have three, so I, I don't think that's unreal. The other thing that, that just came to me, you get the liquor license, you open the business, you sell the business. Everything you've told us here means absolutely nothing at that point because the new owner can do what he wants. He has a liquor license, he has a building, he has a restaurant, he has a bar. And you can't guarantee that that won't happen either.
I can guarantee that I won't sell it. As a liquor license, I give it back to the county.
So I think we've gone far enough with this.
I think we just...
We're not, we're not at all, in, in my opinion, ready to make any decisions. I'm not.
I've, like I said, I need to do some more checking before I'm public.
We need to check some more. You know, nothing else than executive meeting or even, you know, without the public, then we can talk amongst ourselves.
And we might even have an actual public meeting on it.
Well, we can do it after.
We've just kinda done word of mouth and not advertised a public meeting.
Well, I have thought on that too, you know.
I think we need to discuss as a whole to see how we all, like, some executive meeting to kinda talk our thoughts, our processes. This is to see how we all are doing, and then see, open it, go from there if we need to go further with a public meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Yes, and it's nice to meet you, sir. I mean, under circumstances. I mean, I appreciate you coming in and fixing the building and this and that. I like, I do like the idea of, you know, a restaurant would be nice. You know, like you said, that you want to do some bingo, stuff like that. I assume there'd be some people probably would enjoy that, this type of activities. So, your thoughts are?
We got any contact numbers?
I do not. I don't have name or anything.
So your thoughts there are very good?
Anybody wanna leave us something?
So, yes.
Take it. Yes, uh, someone else take a ballot, nine-three-seven?
Unfortunately.
Toby, T-O-B-Y, last name Savage, white Indian. My contact info is nine-three-seven-eight-six-nine-three-eight-two-five.
And where are you from?
Dayton, Ohio.
You're from Dayton, Ohio.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Toby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you taking the time, but just look at it.
Any other old business? Or are we getting into new business?
I don't worry. I settled it up. I asked about it last time. I didn't really get an answer. I asked about it on the main street, you said, and I was kinda in the impression we need a hundred and a money to do that.
Money is what Kathy said, but this one.
Do we not get a disbursement every year from the state?
Yeah, but we're paying that.
Don't we get a disbursement from the state just for road repair?
Yeah, motor vehicle. Did you not look at the, we have motor vehicles?
I looked at the budget. I looked at what we allocated in the budget. So I must be missing something here. We're paying a loan back for one. For the South Main Street paving that came in over...
See, I wasn't on the board that time.
Oh, okay.
Apologize. It came in above what we asked for in the, uh, in the grant. And we decided as a board to go ahead and borrow X amount of dollars to complete the project and pay it back over a five-year period. And we allocated our funds for paving, the street funds, to take care of that so much a year. And I forget what, what the total number, how much we paid a year?
Uh, about fourteen thousand dollars.
It was like sixty, sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand is what we borrowed. And so we have to meet that commitment with the bank.
And see, we have money in the restricted funds, but that is restricted on what you can't, you can't spend that on, and that can't be spent on that.
Okay, so I'd answer that question. But there, there's some money that you were getting, and I remember Nick talking about it. At that time, you couldn't do anything with the money because they didn't have a financial what you could do with it.
ARP money that we got from COVID, we've got that in the water that we're using for, and we use some of it for the drainage, the storm drainage.
But I think the restricted fund was when we had questioned about...
Oh, the way there's restricted paving?
Yeah, because of how you can use that, because it wasn't ever real clear.
Now, restricted was...
It had no designation to it.
No, the restricted has nothing to do with COVID money. The restricted comes from the county.
But what we're saying is, it doesn't say that you could take the restricted and patch, or you can take the restricted and pave, what you can do with that restricted money.
So the restricted is for an infrastructure-type thing, which would be...
That's what I'm leaning towards, yeah. New roads, new, which...
Which would not be infrastructure, still your roads. You got road repair.
Road repair wasn't mentioned in that definition. It was strictly for new roads.
So you wanna build a new road down there, we could use it.
You what?
We wanna build new roads, we could use it.
And you have to put half of your, at least half of your funds in there, which isn't right because, I mean, little towns like us, we're sitting here without, unless we wanna go, you know, like, well, they did the new roads north into town, but... And see, I'm using part of that funds right now to pay this payment.
My understanding was, towns that are expanding and growing, that restricted money would be used in that application for growth.
Because they weren't keeping anything back for that.
Yeah, there was never any funds held back for that, for that growth, which doesn't affect us, but we still follow the rule that we have that restricted fund.
So, yeah, this restricted fund, you receive, and we can't do it anyway.
You can do some things with it. They're very particular. But we don't understand all of it, just to tell you, and Nick explained some of it the other day. You have looked into it, I have looked into it.
And I'm pulling out to pay these funds because this road was a new paved road. So I am pulling funds out of that restricted money to help pay for that every year because this was a new road that we did make. Now, I have not been audited since I am doing that, so I may get my hands slapped when that comes out.
I think, if, if I'm right, it said you could not use it for patching. You can do it for, for repaving or paving a road, or building a new road, but you cannot use it for patching. Makes no sense. Little towns like this are not going to have the dollars to match up with that restricted fund to do a paving project.
How many more years do we have left on this one? Because it's been, what, three years?
It's either five, or was it seven years? But that, I like three years, at least three years left. I know I lived here a year or back.
Because we already have three years into it or more. So it might be about done.
No, it's not about done. I've got two or three years left on it. But I know I lived out of here. Because it's been twice a month. So maybe you're kind of too long.
So we don't, we don't, as a small community in Colorado, for like, uh, what do they call that?
Community crossroad grants, stuff like that.
Yeah, with a twenty-five percent match.
Yeah.
But it can't be used for patching. It can be used for paving.
But we have two years left on it.
Which the infrastructure, which that infrastructure will be used for paving?
Yeah, but we, twenty-five percent of a paving project, we don't have. We knew that when we went back-to-back on two community crossings project. We knew we were gonna expend, you know, and we were gonna have to wait to get into the next community crossings cycle until we paid back that money.
All right, let's, let's, I'll just make it simple. We're not gonna do any road patching in the next three years then.
We did a little bit last year. Where are you wanting, where are you, where are you wanting to?
Just look up where I passed my house. I'm right there in front of the hotel. There's a hole about half-length this table, about this wide and about that deep.
I see, I've got, I've yet to see it.
You didn't see the one state highway. You ran over it a goddamn time.
No, I did that one a time or two.
And, uh, but look, look the middle road. Get a gap about that wide, and right there by my house, just past that second, I'd, the reason here, the street outside it almost. I mean, it's deep. The problem is, what I'm driving at is, hydraulic pressure of water is great. And we get water in those hoes, and it's just like the damn potholes. And the more you hit, the more damn thing expands, they get bigger. We got a pretty decent street up there. I'd hate for us to look like we're Port County if we don't fix the road because it's got a big pot, a hole in it, and becomes a huge pothole across the street.
You're taking that rainy day fun. Because you could take that rainy day fun.
And not because I live on it, but it's a busy street. It's probably a busy street in town Marshall right there.
Yeah, it's gonna keep getting worse.
And there's another piece to this.
How that gonna?
I say there's another piece to this to consider. If we were to ever do sewer project...
So it's gonna be snacks?
The street could...
I understand that. They'd get, they'd get tore up, dug up, they'd get new ones back, yes.
And so I think it's, I think we gotta be cautious of putting money out and in two years tearing it, tearing it back out. I understand what you're saying. I, I, matter of fact, I had talked to B State about coming in two years ago and patching that with that rubber liquid fill. And the cost was astronomical. I mean, it was crazy, and we couldn't even begin to afford that. So we didn't do anything with it. We still haven't done anything with it.
But I'm kinda like him, if you got a decent road game for it to finish ground with.
You sure do. You sure do.
I mean, really.
It's got a lot of traffic on it. I mean, can we end up and look to, I mean, if anybody had come and patched one hole?
Well, you have to buy at least a box full. I forget how many thousand dollars a box full of asphalt is. They won't sell you, they won't come in for less than that. So that's what B State has always done. And we have tailored that patching to the amount of asphalt they will have to the, the worst spots in town. And that's how, how we've worked up to this point.
Could we get like a quote and just see if the rainy day fund can handle something like that?
We sure can.
Just that way we...
But I'm not sure that that's the most needed spot.
Right.
And I'm not...
Oh, I wouldn't say it's the most needed spot, but the problem is that, one, it's pretty down front the hotels. It's gonna get worse and worse. Okay, this is probably gonna suck, I saw it now.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, some of these other streets and...
Oh, seriously?
We right over here is terrible.
I know, but you'd hate for a road that we've already got that is good to go, to get to where the others that we can't hardly go.
Yeah, yeah. I do understand that. I guess it was all, what I was trying to, the point was, we tried to revert what we have. That's a good road, street, or...
It is.
Yeah. And the reason that wasn't patched the last time is because they said the asphalt wouldn't hold in it because of the depth of that wasn't sufficient to hold asphalt. He said, "I can put it in there," but he said, "You'll come back in six months, it'll be gone. It won't stay." It made it deeper now. I'm not sure.
I'll, you can look at it. I look at it every day upon the driveway, and I'll be going north more, and I'll hit that stupid hole down there, probably with the trailer.
Seems like Kathy, yeah, holes? And not what he's accused you of is hitting a hole?
But I haven't hit that one yet.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely look at it. Getting approached. But along with that, I want to look at anywhere else.
Or, yeah.
Because I don't want to look self-serving in any way in town.
Well, like you said, if we end up, we have to buy so much, you gotta look and see where else you could kinda, where else it needs to go.
It seems like it's like three thousand dollars' worth of asphalt you have to buy. That's the minimum, if I remember that.
But we also need to double-check and see if the rainy day fund can handle it because you don't wanna deplete the rainy day fund.
Yeah, I noticed Elm Street yesterday is what I noticed when I was...
Elm Street...
It's on that corner.
Yeah. Elm Street is the one that needs to be ground up and repaved.
It does.
And it's used so limited, but it, it needs it because we lose in the street, and that's why we patched it two or three times to save it from getting away from us. And we have been on that street a number of times with patches. No, we, we just don't have the community crossings money or the match for that to be on the street. That's the worst street in town.
Yeah, part of them that turn on and come back north.
And the water stains on that corner?
Water stains goes around the corner, yeah.
Yeah, I was hoping we would have some patch money this year because we didn't, we weren't able to do much last year.
We didn't do much last year.
So we'll, we can take a look at it. I encourage you to drive around town, note where you think, because that spot down there is not that, that big. It's not gonna take several yards of asphalt. So if we're, we're buying several yards of asphalt, then let's... So if we're buying several yards of asphalt, then let's, let's do the best we can with it. Anything else on old? New business. I was contacted this evening about two issues at the park. One father had, had talked to me about the slides at the park. I told him we had new ones in. It's getting the manpower to put the new slides on the playground because those are very heavy to hold, to put on to the playground. But we have those, we can, we can physically do it if we have the manpower to do that. The other thing was, the baby swings at the park. And you'll remember this because you went to school up there, but those baby swings have two swings on a big U-shaped bar. On one end, on the east end of that upper bar, it's completely rusted through. So I was up there, Nick put signs on them, do not use. I plan on going up there tomorrow and take the swings off. I would like to go out here, probably to the Amish, the welding shop, and see if they'll come in and look at it and give us a cost on replacing those three pieces of steel. I'm sure that's been there since you were a kid.
Not with baby swings, but it had other swings.
Had other swings on there. So that's been ten or twelve years ago, right? I still get dinner tomorrow.
And on that note, I also got that mail about the park too.
Okay. So that's my plan, if that's, meets your wishes, we have to do something.
We got to do something.
It's.
Do that or take them down completely.
We, we can take them down, but we need to take the whole thing down.
That's what I'm saying, completely.
But if we take it down, I mean, I, I think there's a purpose and a need there.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree.
So I, I would, I'll get some kind of a quote from them, and they should be able to put three pieces of pipe together in the, in the ground with concrete. Think you can use the same clamps and clips that the swings hang by and go from there. We received a donation from the Park County Community Foundation at the request of Richard and Shirley Kramer. And I was given this this evening from their account. And so I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to put in the bank for the town marshal. So we have money here that could take care of that up there.
How much was the donation?
Sixteen, sixteen seventy-five and thirty cents. So I'm hoping that we could use it for that. I don't think it'll do the patching. I don't think there's enough there to do that. I've had a couple people talk to me about the water standing at the corner of the field out here.
I was going to mention it to you.
On the angle ground. I went out and took a water sample today, Kathy tested it, there's no chlorine there. So it has to be a tile and not a, a water main that runs, you know, parallel to two thirty-six. So we should be fine there.
I thought they had, because they were working on it here last week or last?
South side or?
He was on the other side.
That was on the other side.
This, this side.
This on the other side.
Oh, now it's on the other side.
Where that, sits way back off the road.
Jackson's farm.
Just before you get there, there's a west.
So would it be anything more, they just moved over?
No, there was a hole that was punched in their line, and they put in the fire.
I know, but when they fixed that one, did that, where does that water tunnel down, go down and cross over at? Is that on past that, where they're current?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be on that.
It's on past, okay.
Which they're not on our water.
Right.
And it's got to be, because there's no line leading up to the puddle or anything, it's just coming right under the ground.
There's a hole right in the middle of the puddle, and so it's, it's like a suckhole on a tile. I'm guessing it's probably filled in with mud and dirt, and it's not draining, and it's just holding it right there. Maybe slowly get one.
And I think a few years ago, the heavy equipment was going in and out in that corner, I think, I remember. I think this makes it work.
Anyone else have any new business they want to bring up?
Anyone, Kevin?
New business?
I have no new business, I saw you sent that sample of the no dogs in the park and all that out there.
Yeah, we're going to take a look at it.
Okay, yes.
Have you been overlooked at those bleachers? I haven't, or think said anything about the bleachers?
No, I've not heard anything. Usually the baseball.
That's what I told her, that.
And we had replaced boards last year.
Last year, I told her that.
Yeah. So I have no idea which, at the baseball field, I don't know which one. This, because I'm not sure who to contact about the benches at the baseball field. So it may not be bleachers, it may be in the dugout. They are rotted and many are cracked and broken. Concerned baseball. So we'll have to take a look at that.
I told her that we replaced some last year on the bleachers and that.
Probably talking about the lower diamond, probably.
I, other than, I guess there is one right, it's the bleachers behind the.
The bleachers behind both of them, probably.
I'm surprised.
The lower diamond, it had bad boards out there a couple years ago.
That's the one that.
Well, said we fixed some a couple years ago last year.
Put some on that.
Brian changed those.
And normally those guys are good about telling us.
Well, that's what I'm surprised.
They haven't said anything.
Right.
Yeah, because usually the use association, whoever's got it lets us know what needs to be fixed, so.
Yeah, they're always good at that, so we'll have to take a look at those. If I get over there with the Amish, look at that swing, I'll swing through there. Anything else on new besides getting to this ordinance? This is the ordinance that Nick put together for us, and I sent a copy out to each of you. And it's establishing the Town Marshal Park Rules and Regulations. Be it ordained by the Town Council of Town Marshal Indiana, upon passage of this ordinance, due publication of this notice is required by IC five dash three dash one that whereas the Town Council of Marshal Indiana has determined that a need exists for an ordinance codifying the rules and regulations governing the use of the Town Park and Marshal Indiana. Therefore, be it ordained. General prohibition. The following rules and regulations shall be applicable and enforceable within the Town Park and Marshal Indiana. The park is to be closed to the public from ten PM to six AM Eastern Standard Time. Possession of alcoholic beverages or controlled substances is prohibited within the park. There shall be no overnight camping within the park. No pets shall be allowed on the ball diamonds or sports fields at any time. All pet or animal waste and/or feces shall be cleaned up by the pet owner and not left on the park grounds at any time. All pets shall be maintained on a leash at all times. Penalties for violations. Any violation of Section One of this ordinance is a Class B infraction, punishable with a fine not to exceed one thousand dollars. The effective date shall be upon the passage of this. Questions, concerns, is that what we had asked for, I assume?
Per bunch cards or anything, I've got one question, okay? Upper, or the shelter house, I'll call it. Do we as a town rent that out for people for?
We don't charge any rent.
Gatherings or anything?
We do, we let them go ahead and reserve.
Okay, because it doesn't matter to me either way, okay? But the only thing is there's a possession of alcoholic beverages. You know, we've got a big picnic, you know, maybe three or four families are, you know, and are drinking beer, there's a picnic, I mean, is that? That's what I'm driving at. See, on the park, that way for years, and they backed off on that, you know?
I, I don't know, I don't know if this is a boilerplate ordinance from somewhere else?
Yeah.
Or, or exactly where it came from.
Well, I guess my real question was, you know, five, six families show up, they have a family picnic, you know, and they're drinking a few beers after, you know? I'll, I'll just say Labor Day, I just throw that out there, you know, I don't see a big deal where I'm driving at. Other than that, I don't see that's wrong with that.
And without having Nick here, we'd need to be able to ask him where it came from and the rationale on that.
That's, that's the reason why, that's what we're.
I don't know how you divorce yourself from beer under the shelter house roof and beer on the swing table.
I agree, one hundred percent. But I've been to many shelter houses out here at the park.
Right.
You know, like, not always, a lot of them got beer, or something, or drank a beer, that's what I'm driving at.
Okay.
Well, I didn't want, here's the deal, I didn't want some person innocently going up there and they got a little family gathering and drink a little bit of beer or something, or a town officer shows up and says, you're under arrest.
Yeah, we, we would have to post it in some way, if that's the direction we go.
I mean, I guess that's what I'm driving, that's what I'm driving at. Other than that, I think it's a great one.
I don't know, you patrol parks, don't you?
Yeah, I mean.
Is that pretty standard, or?
A lot of, like, all the ones in town car, so you can't drink it, that I'm aware of, so.
So they can have one on a koozie and you'd never know it.
Yeah. As long as, if they put it in a McDonald's cup or something.
So your thoughts are, look to change that, or look to post something, or what's your?
Well, I, I don't want to change it necessarily, I want to try to find out, is the definition, you know, we really going to hammer on somebody or throw up or a family picnic, or sitting there in the shelter house and drinking a couple beers? That's what I'm driving at.
Well, they wouldn't go to jail anyways, it'd just be a.
Yeah, but you're going to cite them.
Well, I can't really not cite them and cite the other two people.
That's what I'm driving at.
But the only way you're going to know it is if they get rowdy, right?
Or if I drive by and see them drinking a beer, but, but I can't just let those people do it and not let it.
I understand that.
It sounds like you're planning a union.
He's just getting prepared for anything.
So you're, still, the question is, do we post it and leave the ordinance as is? Or do you suggest making a change? I mean, that's the only way we, I think we can go with it.
Well, what you guys thought, I mean, up there, just how it reads?
I would just post it, no alcohol in the park.
There you go, see how easy that was?
And then the park, with the park times, I mean, we would need to post the park. Park is closed between those two hours, I don't know how they word that in most parks, but.
Yeah, it's supposed to be like that. These can be, a lot of them are just going to be in there after dark.
Okay.
But if Nick gets his lights up, or that park may not close at ten o'clock, if they're playing late ball games.
I think, did he say that they would be though? I think he said that most time, most times they'd be on by ten, I think he made that comment.
I would bet you that he wrote this ordinance, and he's going to be done by the time that this ordinance takes effect. I'm just betting.
Well, because I, I've seen it before, you know?
Sometimes the lights go off at a certain time on those too.
Yeah.
So this has not been patented? Has this been patented in the paper?
I'm assuming not, he's not saying anything about it.
Okay. So, we'll have to work on this for the next meeting.
Yeah, because he didn't say anything about it.
Okay. Questions about the ordinance other than Dale's company? Any other questions?
Do we have to post a thirty day thing on this?
Yeah, I think that's what we were talking about, having Nick do that.
Or do we have to post it after we, see, I don't know, because he was ready for voting for tonight.
Yeah, that's what the date he had in there on it, because I saw that.
Yeah, so maybe then we have to post it after.
I'm sitting right now looking at the date. Period, second day of May of twenty twenty-three.
So maybe you did post it?
I, I don't remember which one.
Views on what he did, when he does and when he doesn't. Because some things have to be ahead, and some things he does.
But I wouldn't seem to send them that out and say, put the date and everything.
Yeah.
Says notice to publish, please publish anytime within thirty days of passage.
Of passage?
Of passage, is what it says.
Say that again.
Thirty days of passage, has to be published within thirty days of passage, it says.
Of passage.
Yeah, that's the last, last sign on.
So what is the effect?
Here he has, notice to publisher, please publish one time within thirty days of passage.
Okay. What is the effective date on that?
Today.
Today. So he had a plan for it to pass today.
I guess you have the answer.
Yeah.
So I will accept the motion on the ordinance.
Would you second it?
Twenty twenty-three dash one, it's an ordinance for the park rules and regulations.
I make a motion that we pass the rule for the park regulations.
We have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept this ordinance as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Other new business? Brady, you're up. Car?
It's back.
I don't know if they knew that, or if it was started back.
It's been gone for three and a half weeks, but. The car's back. I just went to get it today, got it done last night.
The silly thing was, out of all the things that could delay a car from coming back to this, tell them what it was.
The stickers on it, sorry.
The what?
The stickers, the decals.
Out of everything? Anything?
I saw the Franklin property, they had some people out working on it.
It, it looks a lot better.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it's.
She's been talking to me, so I think it's getting better.
Okay. And we have others that I'll need you to, to get on top of.
Yep, you sent me a list.
Anything else? Any concerns that you have to bring to us?
I will make a comment, though. They'd be working at Billy Houston's house. I couldn't believe it.
It's his uncle.
I don't know who it was, I just seen him bend down, and they cut the tree down, took a bunch of stuff off the porch. You got scaffolding set up, I want to go try to patch that hole in the roof a lot.
Uh, they're going to take it all off. And then you were fun, there.
They're going to put a roof on that house?
He says he's got six or seven layers, he's cleaned up in the back, they're going to bring a fixed wheel in once they get a little bit farther along, get the back cleaned up and lived out a bit. They got three kids, two kids here and one trying to.
And that, they got that?
Two kids and one trying to get here, she's from animal.
So the whole family's going to, so they're actually going to live, fix the house up and live in it?
She's excited about it.
I was right, that was his mother's piece of property too. Because I saw the land transfer in the paper, and went to him.
Oh, I hadn't seen that.
Last week's paper. She was a hard one.
Tom?
I'm going to start putting together the Consumer Confidence Report for twenty twenty-two. I'll get that, Kathy, and if you can get that posted, I'll get what I have and get all that daycare, if that's all right. You know, if I could get your new, your totals from twenty twenty-two, so I can do the self-audit.
Total.
And. Yeah, the total. I've got the total numbers of total water gallon, that we got, looking down, we need the total, what we paid.
Oh, the total of what we, usage we actually paid for, okay, for twenty twenty-two.
So we can match those up.
Anything new on the lead line inventory? Have they clarified anything yet?
Clarified, no. But, but there is a device out there now that, called a swordfish, that they can insert into the water line. If there's no other way to figure out, you go through everything you, you have at your disposal, figure out whether there's lead line or not. If that doesn't work, they've got this device that they'll run up through the piping up to the house. And because of the difference in conductivity between the different metals, they can verify whether there's lead anywhere in the system. And they're anticipating it to be between two hundred to seven hundred per installation that you use this on with the caveat that all this will be reimbursed once it's all done. Federal government has all this money that they're going to give toward the lead line inventory.
And so you're going to be able to support that till they reimburse them?
Good question.
Can't control a debt, so it'll be all money, first next month, we won't get a social security check. I'm going to have to do this.
Physically break the line connection in the pit to insert that, to run through, right?
Right. Right. And Simpsons have one that they're starting to use, they've got the training on it.
Oh, we won't own one, we'll just let them do.
Right. But they're basically, like we were talking before, somebody will have to put a list of all your service lines. And if there's any way to verify whether there's line, you know, you could do up to the meter, but now it's from, from a meter to the, to the house. You got some way to verify it, when it was put in, when it was, you know, installed, uh, they're saying if it was installed after nineteen eighty-seven, when lead lines were basically outlawed. That's a, a good reason to say that there's no lead in. But, uh. There probably aren't that many houses in town that qualify for that. But it's all, you know, it's all coming to fruition, I mean, it's a lot of untied up bundles yet that have all kinds of questions to go along with it.
What was the date of the year that they would have?
October next year, twenty-four.
I mean, they would have outlawed the lead line, when would that have transpired?
Uh, I have not heard any, any date on that, basically, once you do this inventory, any service that is not verified or linked free. You gotta come up with a action plan on what you're gonna do about it, how you're gonna verify it. And, you know, on a yearly basis, this line item that you had, why it be updated?
So if you had a home built in nineteen seventy-five, is that reasonable to assume they had no lead lines?
It was after eighty-seven, it'd be.
Oh, after eighty-seven, that was the date I was looking for.
Right.
I'm sorry, yeah. We don't have many of those.
But there's a lot of questions out there still with, uh.
Right, and you're eighteen months away from the due date, then that's right, I begin.
Like they, they've got a spreadsheet, I, I think I, I sent it to you, that there's eight columns that have to be filled out, and there's probably another thirty that you can fill out. How you verified the line, you know, what, what you did, uh, but basically you have to have an address, what, what, I'm giving a number of, you know. You've got a hundred fifty connections, number them, so you know, you know how to go back and figure out which ones are completed, which ones aren't.
Which luckily, most of ours will be the meter to the house, we don't have, like, some of those have an apartment complex. But I was seeing that they have, like, from one to fifty or something in there, without one line that will service in that.
Yeah.
So luckily enough, we can go by addresses for the most part, if we'll identify.
You're saying that this company, the Simpsons or whoever, that has that thing, that, 'cause they'd have to check from the meter to the house. So when you have to open that line, will they pay for it being fit, I mean, what's that gonna cost, who's paying to fix the line, to put it back together, and for them to do that?
Reimbursement, I assume.
Right.
Is that all included?
That's what they say is part of the reimbursement.
And then if you start having leaks because they didn't fix it right.
That's a good point.
Who's responsible for that, 'cause then, 'cause it's back on the homeowner's side.
True.
And, and that's the hard part, I mean, technically, it's the homeowner's responsibility, you know. How, how does the utility force the homeowner to fix that lead pipe?
And what are you gonna do if they don't fix it?
That'd be a question.
There's still a lot of ancient questions.
A lot of things are still evolving on this whole program.
Then there'll be an election, new administration, and the program will stop, and a new one will take its place.
You already spent the money, and then you're gonna try to get your reimbursement back for what you didn't do.
Thanks, Tom. Yes?
And first of all, will you? Questions? Yes.
How often do you pay that note on the street?
In May and.
Seven thousand dollars a time?
Yeah, twice a, um, in May.
You just need initials?
Yeah, twice a year. Here's water adjustments for March and April and May, I just didn't want to tell this to them. Just sign it that way, it should, they should be guided. And here's our daily readings, and we're still running high, but love what we're used to, the worry is still in the.
On the street?
Yeah, we're not back down in the teens yet, but I have a customer that's used twenty thousand gallons again this month, they have a leak, but they know they have a leak and they're not addressing it. So, I had another customer that contacted me about, um, she thought she had a leak, I questioned it on her bill last month. She did have a leak, she found it, and she called me and thanked me, and then she also fell over a pool, so she let me know that it would be hiding in. So, I did circle one on the south end of town, a possibility of a leak, they use double what they normally do.
We do got quite a few new customers.
So. Like you are.
New customers.
Yeah, we've had five come into town. So we've got one more, and possibly two more, so.
Obviously, big usage on April first, forty-five thousand.
No, I don't, and look.
There's another one on April sixth, thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah, I don't know. Let me see if I, I don't know if there's any respires or anything, has there?
I've been gone.
And see, I've lost you, but I had the eighty-eight hundred on, and I had to get on the second reserve from Mac, I don't know what exactly they use that. So I just kind of rough guessed on what you called me, so I don't know. Kitty was not saying anything about doing, it's still kind of cold, did not tell nothing, did that?
Yeah, I think they're gonna do hydrogen flushing, I believe we're scheduled in June to do flush all hybrids, so, he'd let you know beforehand.
And I know you and I had talked in the past, and I just kind of brushed it off at the time, didn't have the right contact, I got someone that emailed me this week about the debit card on paying. Well, last week, and so I had a time that I had him contacting me. And I got a guy, he's out of Newburgh, Indiana. And what they would do, how it works, that they would set us up for a hundred ninety-nine dollars, one time fee. They would design our webpage, whatever we want on there, be it water power or whatever, so that they would know it's ours and the people would go to it. Um, they provide support at any webpage and design and train. No monthly cost to us, any way, shape or form, a hundred ninety-nine dollars is a one-time thing.
This, this is a national cost, that's it?
Hundred ninety-nine dollars for us. Then, the service fee is paid by the customer. When they go online to pay the water bill, if it is under sixty dollars, it's a flat dollar seventy-five. If it's, excuse me, with a credit or debit card, it's a flat one seventy-five for under sixty dollars. If it's over sixty dollars, it runs between three and six dollars, depending on how much it is.
Yeah, but it's over sixty dollars, what happened?
Runs between three dollars and six dollars, depending on how much over sixty dollars it is, so it's a percentage, but he didn't tell me that percentage. If it's ACH, which is just directly pulled out of your checking account, it's a flat one seventy-five no matter what. You cannot set up a recurrence, you have to go in every month to pay it, well, not automatically do it. Um, there's two ways you can do it, the customers can go online and pay it, or they could come into my office and do it, and I said, I don't want any part of that. So he said that would eliminate the second part, so it would strictly be customers would go on, they could pay it. Then it would be reimbursed to us next day, and I could get a daily printout on what's been paid every day, and a report. And they put it into our bank and.
So, so, I know what you're after, I mean, I know what you wanna do, what they wanted to hear, but is that gonna be required for a buy-in town?
No, 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 it's optional, because we've talked about people that said, hey, can you, we pay it with our credit card, can you take it out of our bank account? And we thought maybe we'd get some more bills paid easier, instead of, one of these days I was feeling the bank's gonna be gone.
That's what I was getting ready to ask you, is this?
I don't know that, I mean, don't get me, I hope they're not, because they do have a good business, when you sit up here and see the amount of traffic that goes through here, you don't realize how busy they are, but, you know, it's a terror. But luckily enough, they take the majority of our payments for us, other than what gets mailed in, so when that time comes, we're gonna do something different. And more and more people are asking to put it on their credit cards, pull it out of their bank accounts, this way they can just go online and do it, because everybody's wanting to go to paying everything online.
I already pay you online, I go to my bank.
You go to the bank and tell the bank to do it.
Yeah, just type it in.
You're, there's about three people that do that, that they go online and tell the bank to pay it.
Yeah.
So this is just an option that we could look at, a lot of people have debit cards, and you see the different court traders would say they use debit card, and they see it will light them. So it's, it's cheaper than a credit card, 'cause credit cards fees are, and we have to pay credit card fees if we would do that, so.
And their website is secure, 'cause then that's what you're gonna run into too.
As far, I didn't ask him that question, but as far as I know, they should be, because, I mean, they're, they're just not right off the door, they've been around for a long time. But, I mean, I could double check with him and see, but, yeah. Cause most anymore.
The homeowner would have to apply and receive the card?
Uh, it's, I think it's just called debit card, I don't think there's actually a card, you just go online and do it, and it tells you where to go, I'd have, what I'd have to do is I'd have to sit down a paper in the bill and say, this is another option that you can do, and give them instructions on what they have to do.
It's like the treasurer office, you can pay your taxes, property taxes online on their website, the treasurer has a link to that site, you can pay.
Okay.
So, I didn't know if that's something you guys would wanna look, me to look further into, down the road, if we just wanna.
You know other places that are using it, to see if they're happy with the customer, other towns, anybody?
I, I can put, they just mentioned it on that they knew, 'cause different ones have asked, what do you use, and they'll say, I use debit card, but I haven't specifically asked them.
I'd like to see what they're, you know, any trouble, any issues, so.
I definitely see positives.
I see positives, 'cause people are.
Well, I don't see positive, I also see people, really complaining, you know, the water bills are over sixty dollars, they're going charging another. But they can go to the bank and just pay like they have to.
Yeah, I mean, they don't have to do that.
They can avoid. No, but I mean, to do that, offer that, they'd like to take advantage of that, though, but then there's gonna be a fee on top of that, I can see people complaining, balking at that too.
But it's amazing how many people pay everything with credit cards anymore, and they don't think twice about me. I get aggravated when I have to pay a fee when I get pulled out of my checking account, but, but yeah, so. But we thought there's some of these that are carrying over and carrying over, that that might be an option, that they would just throw it on their credit card and pay it, and if they're putting on their credit card, they're already paying a percentage anyway. On the interest rate, so I doubt that they even.
So I'm assuming they're in that same instance then, you say next day the money's available, so it's in, once it's paid.
It goes into our account, I don't have to even transfer it, it goes into our accounts.
But they're gonna notify if that card doesn't pass muster, and it fails to pay?
They won't notify her, that they'll end up rejecting it.
It should be rejected like a credit card goes through, it's, this is like, have you ever?
I understand, but if a credit card denied, if a credit card denied, are you gonna be aware of that, is my question?
She won't even get it, 'cause, 'cause the process, that website won't process it.
Right.
The website won't even go through and let the transaction take place, until it end up, because it's already, it's already pinging that credit card to make sure the money's there and already putting a hold on it. And it, it's approved, saying that card, that money's already accounted.
I understand that, I understand that entirely.
Yeah, but.
I just read, the reason I'm questioning, I just ran into this, I had a credit card, well, it's my cell bill, automatic hits every month. My new card didn't arrive in time for the expiration date on it, same card, same.
Now, that's a reoccurring, and see, you can't set up a reoccurring.
And, yeah, I, I understand it, what I'm saying, somebody might think they're using a current credit card, and the card is expired, is what I'm saying. Are you gonna know it at that time, or is it just gonna look like a delinquent, account's not being paid then to you then?
It won't go through.
I understand it won't go through.
I'm not gonna have any knowledge of that, and I'm.
There you go, you have to acknowledge that.
The only thing she's gonna have to acknowledge, the only thing she's gonna get to her, that card, that account is.
That account is not getting paid that month.
Yes, and then she's gonna bill it for the late fee.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't happen that if I don't get paid, then yeah, then they're gonna know it's not gonna get paid, because it's not gonna go through.
Because that's gonna be between them and the website.
Yeah. But, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, because, I mean, we continue, it's simple what we're doing now, but there are some out there that have asked when they call, and with getting the newer customers that are coming from the city. That's one of the first things they say, you take credit cards, no, we don't, okay, we go to the bank, okay, that's, and that's simple.
Then I, like me, I pay things online because it's just, I've, I've always used to work out of the house, now that I work at home, but still, I don't have time to run, to go pay it somewhere.
We don't run, we just mail it all out, I don't do any online banking.
But I'd have to go to the bank, I have to go up to post office and get stamps.
Well, see, some people don't have checks.
I never have stamps.
It's 'cause they do that.
Yeah.
It gives them another option.
Right.
It's just a.
It's not gonna be the answer for everyone.
Cash, I mean, like you said, if they're short of cash, they might end up using a credit card, and then that way they don't have to delinquent, and then we could get our accounts cut out.
Use a credit card, yeah.
Yeah, you can use credit.
Yeah, you can.
You can use a credit or debit, or.
You just can't, you can't make it a reoccurring, correct?
Or I have to go in every month.
Each time, each month, you have to put it in.
And once they pay by that credit card, we have the money we don't worry about.
Right, that's right.
Which is a good thing.
Which actually is a good thing, yes.
Because if somebody said that I'm short this month, and I'll, I'll get you next month, well, they can just use a credit card and pay the credit card company next month.
That's what you're hoping.
That's what you're hoping, yeah.
I, I'm in favor of continuing with this, and, because I think it's a good thing, I think we oughta move into that realm.
Now, I probably won't work, I told him, and I probably won't do anything with it until next month.
I'd give them once you shut the door off.
Right, right, 'cause I get Thursday, I go in for my surgery, so I will probably be out for the next thirty days. So, and I told him that, I said, we'll talk about it, and I said, but I won't be able to actually do anything if the board agrees, until sometime in June, so. But I told him I'd get back to him, if I'm gonna know. I said, I'll just picture the water power on there, or whatever we want to make it ours, so.
Thank you, anything else?
I'd say we've had five new customers come to town, and we. I'd say we've had five new customers come to town, and we've got the potential for one, two, three more right now. And the Smelt House sold.
I thought.
But I don't know for sure. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of work, but I don't know for sure what they're gonna do with it. And there's been a couple different things mentioned, so that may be another potential line put in there, or turned back on, I guess I should say. And Jackson Farms did fix their water leak, and we got it turned back on today.
So one of that, you're.
No, that was after that, unless for some reason he went down there and looked at it himself, I don't know. He called me to have him come and turn that on.
Good.
No, that's it.
Anybody else? Anything for the floor? For Germany. Thank you.
Any others?